Moment of silence. Pause.
When I worked at a radio station, a fellow once said that. This moment of silence brought to you by the makers of mistakes.
That would be helpful. I was looking for the actual thing that you sent that I had in front of me that I was going to use as the basis for the conversation.
More help.
Okay, that's good. All right. So, I thought we'd start out on some really good news today.
I was going to say.
As you may recall, with United Front and in other places, we had applied for a designation as a manufacturing community under the Investing in Manufacturing Communities Partnership Program. And our wonderful Lisa Gardner led the charge on this. And what we found is we wanted to compete for being sort of at the head of the list for technical help and grant opportunities from the federal government. That we would be more competitive if we had more population engaged in it. And so Lisa did a lot, and with many partners, did the groundwork of putting this together with from Eugene Springfield County, on up through the Corvallis area, on up to Portland, on over to Hood River, and on over to Vancouver. And that created this partnership. And last time we applied for this grant, they gave 12 of us, and we were number 13, if I recall. And so, being undaunted, we reapplied. And as of today, we were awarded this designation.
All right.
Honestly, puts us up in the category of it's another huge piece of economic development for our area, for our state. So it's really, really important. And I'm just going to read this. U.S. Secretary of Commerce Penny Pritzker today announced 12 new communities that have received designations under the Obama Administration's Investing in Manufacturing Communities Partnership, or IMCP Initiative. And in May 2014, Secretary Pritzker announced the first 12 communities to receive the designation under this U.S. Commerce Department-led program. Which is designed to accelerate the resurgence of manufacturing communities nationwide by supporting the development of long-term economic development strategies. The important signal to potential investors that these communities are a good place to spend their money, and this is a smart government at work, said Secretary Pritzker. By breaking down silos and encouraging communities to take a more thoughtful, comprehensive approach to their strategic plans, we are ensuring that precious federal dollars are used on the most high-impact projects in a way that maximizes return on investment. So, I just wanted to let you know that and let you feel good about it because that's you. So, thank you.
Mayor, what I'll do is we'll send some additional information out here in the next couple of days to all the councilors. That will give you a broader basis for it, so.
Thank you. Okay. So, everybody feel good now? We'll go to work.
The tone is set, right there.
All right. The tone is set, we hope. Can do, can do. So, we are going to be talking today about multi-unit property tax exemption. And did you want to say anything to the manager before I started launching? How are we going to go through this?
No.
Okay. So you have in front of you a sheet of paper.
They are about to have a sheet of paper.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark would like to be in the queue.
Half year.
I would also like to be in the queue.
Thank you.
So, the way we plan on going through this, you see in front of you, is just to go through these issues, these questions that are here one at a time. You get a sense of where you are on those things. And then, when we through them all, Glenn is going to summarize them. He's going to tell you what he thinks the ordinance language will be. You will make a motion to either accept that, or modify it, or whatever you choose to do. Correct?
Correct. And if I can just add, Mayor, the sheet you have in front of you is an attempt to take all of the different ideas, proposals, motions that you, all of you have suggested over, well, since the last work session on this, and then capture them into these categories. And so, George and Alan, the ones that you were talking about last night, that's also included here. And then at the end of your choices, I may be able to tell you, okay, we have a draft ordinance that we can look up at the screen and show you. If your choices are more complicated, I'll probably tell you we need to come back on Monday with the actual ordinance.
The one with one of those two things. And so, is this a question about the process?
It is. Thank you, Mayor. If one of us would prefer an alternative way of going through this process, how would we best do that? I don't know whether I'm asking you, or whether I'm asking the mayor. And the reason is that I was hoping we might do as typically where one of the previous options that was presented in the manager's previous information might be the basis point for a start, and we make simple motions to adjust and amend. Because I believe we can get through rather quickly on that basis, and I have a couple of motions I'm prepared to make in order to do that. How might we do that differently? Shall we wait until we go through the queue here, and then make motions?
So, I'm facilitating this meeting, and my preference is to go through it in this manner, in hopes to do just what you were talking about, to just hear from everybody, and then see where we are, and then put that together.
But we're not going to be voting on any of this stuff, right? These are just options?
These are, so let me give you an example. Like, I would say, I'll just examples. Do you want to go ahead, Mike, and get your question answered by somebody else? Because I answered.
Oh, I had, I only had one other part of my question, if I could, and I apologize. And I, you did answer my question, that first question, well. My only other question was, it seems that there's an, no, you know what? I'm just going to say, when we get around to, are you going to have us go through one at a time what we think about each of these options? And then the queue will start with George and I?
No.
That's fine.
Okay. Good to go. So the first, did you have your hand up for?
No, for, in the queue.
Can I talk about the boundary? Question one is about the boundary. And my sense of listening to you is there is a report for moving the western boundary to Charnelton. Just want to see if anybody has any, if anyone wants to say.
From?
Yes. And that, we've discussed this previously. Yes.
I would say that the simplest way, the simple way to do this is usually, and probably the best way to do this, so I wouldn't want to change the boundary, other than to do some of the things that have been suggested, such as to have a particular different thing apply east of Charnelton. I would suggest that the manager's proposed second option with George's language around workforce housing would be a good place for us to start with some of these options. And so, I think there's a kind of a divergent thing that happens after we have the discussion about workforce housing. So I would hope we could kind of land on that place.
So we're going to first go through, just, there's been a lot of talk about moving the Mupti boundary to Charnelton, correct?
Right. And to make it clear, what we're talking about is the downtown Mupti moving, and if you look at the AIS that's in your packet, the last page of that shows you where the current boundary is. And then this would simply be moving the western boundary from where it's shown to Charnelton.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through this. So the second question you're going to be asked about is who the panel's composed of, and there are options there. The third question you're going to be asked about is whether you want workforce housing, whether you want no workforce housing and owners pay a fee, whether, and this is in the downtown area, or whether you want Option C, existing proposal for workforce housing, 30% of units alternatively pay the equivalent workforce housing fee. So there's three choices for workforce or no workforce in this section for you to look at. And then the question four is about activating workforce housing outside of Mupti, activating Mupti outside of downtown. So that's the things that we're going to go through in that order. So the first question up is moving the boundary to Charnelton. And I'd just like to go around the table and get everybody's point of view here. So Claire, we'll start with you.
Sure. So the map in our AIS is so little, it's hard to know where we're moving the boundary from. So if someone could clarify that, that would be helpful.
Right. And my apologies, actually wasn't attached to the AIS. It was attached to the ordinance that I emailed out yesterday. And it's, so it's this map. And right now, the western boundary.
Lincoln.
Is Lincoln, and it juts out a little bit. And what it would do is move one block into Charnelton. So that's what the change would be, from here to Charnelton.
Okay. I don't recall, and I apologize to my colleagues, that we wanted to move the boundary further east. I prefer what's in our AIS under Option A, which is the downtown area is the downtown plan, plus one property on 11th and Lincoln, that was in the 2004-2011 boundary, and the EWEB property north of Fourth Avenue. So that would be.
Is that the current?
So I don't know if that is current. It sounds like it's.
That is current. So you prefer current.
So if that's the current configuration for what's considered downtown under the Mupti, that I would support keeping it as that.
Alan?
I agree.
Keep the same one?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was the rationale for those that wanted to move it, for moving it over?
Nobody said.
We don't remember.
Staff did.
Well, maybe when we get around the table.
My understanding is, you know, we're going to consider some special exceptions to the downtown area. And what I've heard is, this is regarded as the core, as regarded as not core downtown, where it's easier to develop. There's, you know, it's harder, we've been told harder to develop downtown. So that's why the boundary was moved. In my understanding, that's my understanding.
Okay. All right.
I support Option B.
So you're a keep, keep the current one, is that what you said?
Correct.
And Mike?
I would prefer to keep the current one. Will we be doing these each one at a time? Is that it? I prefer to keep the current boundary with the exception of the difference in treatment depending on the line.
That's a separate motion.
Is that me?
Which we can get to when we get to motions, I guess.
Okay. Counselor Pryor?
I would keep the existing boundary.
Counselor Bullock?
Keep the existing boundary, but open to suggestion based on proposed motions, which I'd like to hear before we make a final decision.
And we're just doing the straw on this particular thing, just to get a sense of you. This is not a vote. Okay. And Counselor Brown, I think I heard you say that you wanted to change it, right?
Yeah.
And Counselor Taylor?
Keep it.
Okay. And Counselor Evans?
Keep the existing boundary, but leave us some wiggle room to, you know, maneuver that as need be.
According to the, what happens next?
Yes.
Got a sense of you then. Okay, we'll move on to, and did you want to say what you got out of that, Glenn, so we can?
I heard we are, that the map that would be attached would remain the current boundary, and that depending on how the council deals with some of the other questions on this, some councilors may suggest for those particular issues, there should be a slightly different boundary. But in terms of what the boundary is for the Mupti downtown, it would remain the current one. We wouldn't change that boundary.
Moving on to the panel professionals for the oversight panel, you've got a choice here between what we've got, existing list. You can, you've got adding a human rights professional and splitting the environmental and public health into two separates. You've got only add a new human rights professional, but no split. Or you've got five professionals by splitting public health, but not adding human rights. So the one that has everything is the six professionals one. Does that make sense? Okay, let's start around then.
I would be in support of the six professionals. And in addition, specifying that the labor union representative slot be a building trades labor union, either member or representative. So that we specify that it's building trades.
Alan?
I concur with that.
Okay. Mike?
Existing, but with the concurrent specification on labor.
Chris?
I would also concur with Claire's proposal on six professionals.
Okay. George Bullock?
At this point, I would say the existing proposal with the specificity that Claire has put on the labor union position.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
Six.
Counselor Taylor?
The five by splitting environment, public health, so there's one of each, that's what that means, right?
Counselor Evans?
The six with Counselor Soret's specificity around the trade union.
Okay, so I heard five in favor of the six, and just so I'm clear on the language, Claire, that's, instead of saying labor unions, it would be building trades union?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's sort of the straw poll of where we are. All right. Then downtown, here are the options. No workforce housing requirement and no fee. B, no workforce housing and owners must pay a fee equal to a certain percent of tax exemption. That could be a fee equal to 10% of tax exemption, a fee equal to 10%, or, or as Counselor Zelenka put forward, 10% of tax for projects less than a capital cost of 15, and equal to 15% for projects greater 2 or greater than 15. And then Option C, existing proposal requirement for workforce housing, 30% of units or alternatively pay the equivalent workforce housing fee. Counselor Soret?
I would lean towards a modified Option B. I think the option to either include the units or pay the fee would be my preference, and I like what Counselor Zelenka has done with the 10% split between the costs of the projects. And at this point, I'm not in favor exempting downtown projects from this requirement.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka?
I like my idea.
That's shocking.
Option B with your.
B2.
Yeah. And I'm not in favor of exempting downtown.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
I don't see on these options, George Brown's latest, I think Option C comes as close to it, and I think that's where we need to land, and here's why. I think that it's very clear that without workforce housing as a part of this proposal, it will go to the ballot and it'll go away as a tool forever. The only way that stops, because of the number of people in our community concerned about community benefit, is if it contains a workforce housing component. I'd be in favor of doing that as a way of making sure this is beneficial to the largest amount of people in our community, but only in the downtown plan, west of Charnelton. East of Charnelton, I would suggest a 10% fee, as has been suggested. I know George said 20. We'll see where that lands. But that, I believe, is the place where we can create the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people in our community.
No. Mike, can you, let me repeat and see if I understood you.
It's Option C.
So Option C says downtown, there would have to be workforce housing. And my understanding, and I expect George will speak to it when it's his turn, my understanding of what George was saying is, we would have a workforce housing requirement outside of downtown, wouldn't have a workforce housing requirement inside of downtown. And that's what Option B does.
It's subtly different than that. Mupti should, in this time and in all future times, contain a workforce housing component. And in this particular case, however, just at this one time, with the downtown region east of Charnelton, it would not contain, it would have an absence of that provision east of Charnelton. And in its stead, as a public benefit component, would contain the 10% towards either workforce or affordable housing.
Okay, so that is?
And I believe his motion was for 20%.
That is?
Of the tax credit amount.
What's intended by Option B, other than, Option B doesn't say the east of Charnelton, so that would be an add-on. That's where I thought we were going to deal with that under boundary, and I understand we're not. So, but what Option B is intended to say is downtown, you could have a Mupti, there would be no workforce housing requirement, but you would have to pay a fee, and then the fee either would be equal to, depending what you guys say, is either equal to 10% of the tax exemption, or it's equal to.
You're saying no workforce housing component downtown, and I'm saying the downtown plan map still currently goes to what? Jefferson, where does it go?
Lincoln.
Lincoln.
That's the base, is that it does apply, except east of Charnelton.
So that means it would apply.
In that stretch down there, that's right.
This one strip.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
So it's Option B.
No, it's Option C. It's Option C.
Well, it's Option B except for that strip, which would be C.
Right. Option C, right.
It's important to me that that distinction be understood. Because it's Option C with the caveat being east of Charnelton. And the reason that's important is because we don't want to be confused moving forward, that workforce housing as a provision is always the baseline assumption when we begin a new Mupti area discussion. That has to be understood.
Okay. Counselor Pryor?
Yes, I support Option B. And I'm intrigued by the notion of creating a sliding scale on the percent of investment, but I don't have enough information about how that ultimately pencils out. I really appreciate Alan's effort to try to find a way to see if we can capture more of that, and as projects are bigger, there's a possibility to do it. But I don't know yet if that's, if that's the way it would be. So I think that would be a real worthwhile conversation to have, and we could certainly have that conversation. But for here and for today, probably I would stick at the 10% and be intrigued to find out what our professionals and others would say about perhaps putting in a sliding fee later time.
Counselor Bullock?
Mike brought up some interesting points as far as Option C. Again, based on the conversations that I had anticipated around George's proposed motions, would have probably more refined my decision. I guess at this point, I would say no workforce housing requirement, no fee requirement, until I hear more from the proposed motions that were put out.
Counselor Brown?
Well, you know, some, I have, I have three motions. Two of them directly address this question, and they are centered on the Option B field.
Say what the content is and see if it fits in.
Well, one of them is to, I revised, I revised my initial motion that I sent you by email, and I removed the 30% requirement, and I removed the annual payment requirement, in lieu payment. But they're both still in there. The thing is, in an hour, well, we have an hour and five minutes. We cannot possibly land on specific numbers there. But the first motion will be embedded in the ordinance if it passes, and that will say, future areas, everything else except the downtown core will have a workforce unit requirement of some percentage of the units. But the developer will have the option to pay an in lieu fee that will be based on what workforce rental rates would be. And we don't know what those percentages are yet. But there's 500, count them, this is from the Center on Housing Policy, there's 500 jurisdictions in the United States that have policies like this, of a requirement to provide either extremely low income or affordable or workforce housing, a certain percentage, and they all vary, depending on the community. And they also have requirements, an option for the developer to make an in lieu payment fee, or provide land somewhere else for workforce housing, or there's other options. So we need to, I want to repeat again, there's 500 jurisdictions in the United States that have these programs. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can study theirs and land on, on what's going to work for Eugene, for us, for the residents, for the city, for the developer. There's a sweet spot in there, we have no inkling what it is right now. That will require some study. And so, that's, my, both my motions, the two, directly address this, so I'll be making those later. But yes, I would favor, the short answer is, I would favor some form of Option B.
Thank you. And could I get in the queue for when we start talking later? Before Mike gets all the time.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I want to say one more thing.
Are you too?
Well, you give me permission to ask one question.
Sure. Your time wasn't up. That's my time they're using now.
Let's do it this way. Let's just finish this and then we'll.
Thank you.
Okay. If, this is like one of those tests where you want to say none of the above.
Yeah.
And like those elections where you want to say, none of the above, please. But if I had to choose, and I'm against the whole thing, everybody knows that, I would choose Option C if I had to choose one of these. And it's, I think, and except that I would not give the in lieu of option. I think certain percentage actually workforce housing. They can, it doesn't have to be this equal, types of equal value of the other units, but you can make two units out of one and rent them for less, and there are lots of ways you can do that. Thank you.
Greg?
I thought George was.
I'm going back to him.
Okay. Okay. So I am originally in favor of Option A as a baseline for us to begin to work from, but I'm willing to work with Option B. So Option B with a fee equal to 10% of tax exemption is something I think that we can, you know, work around and be able to, to land on something that would be hopefully, you know, palatable to most folks, not only at this table, but out into the community. And we're only, remember, we're only talking about the downtown area. We're not talking about the other Mupti areas, which would be subject to the 30% workforce requirement, and that would be, you know, going out Highway 99, 67th, Willamette, Coburg, all of those major transportation corridors that we've designated as Mupti areas.
George?
My question is, Option B, it says owner, you know, no workforce housing requirement, but the owner must pay a fee equal to X percentage of the tax exemption, or the owner can choose to develop an affordable housing project on the same development site. What, I need clarification. What is that?
I think that was a provision that was in the previous ordinance, so the best example is the OB project where you have Haxha developing and OB developing on the same development site. So in a sense, you get credit for that affordable housing in that.
So you're saying the developer will get credit for that, even though they're not investing in it, and they're two totally separate projects? My understanding is Haxha is a standalone, that project is a stand, totally standalone from the OB corporations.
That's correct.
And this, and OB has absolutely no financial involvement in Haxha.
It's being, that's correct, I believe. But the, you know, the EWEB is the other example that we used. It's a master planned area. It's not likely that the developer, that if they do develop affordable housing, it would probably be the same scenario. They would partner with an affordable housing project, and they necessarily wouldn't own it. So that provision really is to take into that consideration, using those two projects as an example.
Well, yeah, that's, I can't support that part of it, just, just moving forward, because that lets them off scot-free. They're like, playing like they're providing, but they're not. Somebody else is. But anyway, that's, thank you.
What you're talking about, we're getting confused again. This is subsidized housing, not workforce housing. Thanks.
So the original idea, this is a new idea that Penny just said, the original idea The original idea when this was put forward was that within the same project, there would be affordable housing. And that's what's envisioned here. The changing of that vision to a development plan with unrelated parts is really, really different to me. And that's not what I intended when I was put forth my motion or said I was in favor of B. It's in the same unit. So part of it would be affordable housing and part of it would be market rate.
Mike?
If you wanted to.
When we had the original discussion about some of these alternatives, one of the pieces that was important was how we defined that. And one of the kind of language choices around it was considering it like a PUD. If you have a developer that has several different, you know, aspects and parts of what anyone on the outside would look in and say was the same development. They may have help and assistance on different parts and pieces from someone, but from the outside, you might consider the whole thing one development, rather like a PUD. And in that case, I thought we had discussed previously that in fact, that would suffice, much like, as was mentioned, the OB particular situation does. And I hope that's how we move forward, too, because I'd be in favor of that as well.
Counselor Pryor.
I will go back to the significant discussion the Housing Policy Board had about this very question. And I appreciated the fact that they took the time to advise us on the affordable housing element. I'm not talking workforce housing, I'm talking the affordable element. And rather than build the units into the building, their recommendation was to make a payment so that you could use that money where it was most needed and where it would be most effective, and where it would be permanent. You've got to remember, after 10 years, when the exemption expires, all of these affordable units and workplace housing and everything else suddenly turns into market rate. I don't want that to happen. If there's going to be affordable housing, I want it to be sustainable, permanent, affordable housing. And making a contribution that then pays for permanent affordable housing is what the Housing Policy Board and I myself came to agree with. And so the whole notion of you've got to make them build it in this project is nice on the surface, but you dig about an inch down and you find out that that's good for 10 years, and then all bets are off. So I think you need to work with what naturally creates affordable work and workforce housing, and that's the natural market process. And don't try to shoehorn it into these. So I strongly support the notion of a payment in lieu of forcing them to build it into these projects, because that's not the permanent solution.
And what do you think you've got here?
What are we debating here?
I think what we have is, depending on some details yet to be decided, that maybe five or six councilors are in favor of parts of Option B. But there will need to be more discussion about the definition of what constitutes a project, which is in the ordinance that went to the council public hearing. And it's similar to what Mike described, you know, single development site, own all the parcels owned by one person. But depending on how some of the additional conversation goes, that may help flesh out something that I can say, "Okay, I think I see where there's a majority of the council." At the moment, I see a majority of the council supporting parts of Option B, depending on how you describe it, but not all of it. So my suggestion is keep the conversation going, and when we get to the end...
We'll figure out where we are. So the next part is activating areas outside of downtown. And you have four options here. Option A, council can authorize MPT in an area outside downtown if either area planning is completed for the neighborhood or citywide code amendments approved that address spatial transition between commercial and multifamily zone properties with single-family zone properties and an official neighborhood association request activation. That's kind of the current...
That's what's in the current draft that went to the public hearing.
And then Option B, council can authorize MPT in an area outside of downtown only after adopting or amending and having the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development acknowledge refinement plan policies that specify specifically provide for multiple family and mixed use properties within that area. Option C is to add A to B. Before any area outside of downtown can be activated, the council may must adopt amendments to the MPT program according to a percentage of units in an approved MPT project must be workforce housing, or the developer must make commensurate in lieu of payments to the city that are based on workforce housing rental rates, and that any such payments will be dedicated to the workforce housing fund. Option D, add A to B, A to A or B, or any area outside downtown can be activated. Council must approve a workforce housing plan. So we need Counselor Zalinka's proposal with MPT criteria and potentially other non-MPT program incentives with consideration of plan not later than July 30, 2016. Those are your options for consideration on this one. We tried to capture what everybody was trying to bring before you.
And Mayor, if it hopefully helps, the Option A basically says there are a couple of requirements before the council can activate, light up, an area for MPT outside of downtown. Option B here is George's motion, hopefully I captured it right this time, that says instead of what is in Option A, it actually has to be a refinement plan policy acknowledged by DLCD. That would be a prerequisite to lighting something up. Option C is additional language that hopefully I captured correctly from George. And then Option D, as you said, is Allen's. Wait, before... In addition to anything else, there's an additional prerequisite, and that's you have to have this workforce housing plan, which would come back to the council for consideration before basically a year from now.
Hey, Counselor Turin.
I think these are a good set of options. I could support Option A. I think that provides a lot of protection to neighborhoods. And I think our intent is for any MPTs outside of downtown to be focused on our transit corridors, where we're hoping to incentivize more dense development. So Option A would be fine with me. I would also be open to considering Option C, but would more likely prefer Option D, because I think actually taking some time to think about the workforce housing piece while we allow MPT to start up in downtown would be a smart way to move forward.
Allen?
Yeah. I can agree to Option A, which is the trigger. And then I have a question about B and refinement plans. How many refinement plans do we have? When was the last time we did one? And do we have any plans to do anymore?
Given that none of us are planners, I don't think we can answer that right now at the table.
Ballpark. Or I'll give you a ballpark.
Other 20? 15 to 20 refinement plans.
Out of 30-something neighborhoods. And we haven't done one in a decade or more. And we don't have plans to do any more refinement plans. We do different kinds of plans, but we're not doing refinement plans.
So the words that George used in his motion, to me, are simply more specific, but they were really what I had intended in Option A when it says area planning is completed for a neighborhood. The way I envisioned that area planning would be completed for a neighborhood is through a refinement plan. So I don't actually see George's as substantively different. It just specifies what I had originally intended for the area planning. And remember, it's not how many neighborhoods are there out there. It's because you're not authorizing MPT, at least in the version that went to the public hearing, can be used anywhere in the city. It specifies, I don't remember how many, maybe 10 areas in the city where it can be used.
Right. Having some experience with refinement plans in the university neighborhood in relation to development by the university, it's a very specific document that has legal constraints to it, and it can be enforced. Other area plans don't necessarily fit in that category, so it's fundamentally different. I think refinement plans might be a good idea. I'm not sure how we're going to get that. I'd love to have everybody have a refinement plan, especially in the areas where you develop, but I'm not sure we have the horsepower or person power to do that within planning. I think that's something we could discuss if we were going to do a plan. Same with Option C. I think that's... All of those things that are in what George put there could definitely be part of the plan, and I would suspect would be part of the plan. But my problem with where we are right now with regard to workforce housing is that's just not quite right for us to say, "Let's do it this way." With regard to MPT and/or the entire city, workforce housing is a big issue in this city. There are an enormous amount of people, maybe as much as 50% of the people in our town are renting burden, meaning they're paying more than 30% of their rent, 30% of their income for rent. Some people are up in the 50% range, which puts a lot of constraints on their lives. And so workforce housing and be able to have that kind of lower cost housing is very, very important. That's why I think we need to think about that in a broader concept with regard to the entire city, and not just as it relates to MPT, but entire city. And therefore, that's why I had Option D, which was that we would work on over the next year, a workforce housing plan that had a MPT component and possibly even a non-MPT component for the rest of the city and the areas that we're not activating MPT. So because I think it's such a big deal. And I didn't want it just to linger out there forever and that we would just have this concept or a goal to get at a plan. So I put a date in there, which is a year before our next summer break. So between now and then, we could work on over this next year what a plan would be to create workforce housing and put that in place. And then it could impact MPT, and we could amend it, and it could also impact the rest of the city. So that's why I was in favor of D added on to A.
Okay. Mike?
It's my belief that the cost and expansion trouble and horrible outcomes and cats and dogs living together problems of refinement plans is kind of a straw, man. This is very specific. It's not saying we need refinement plans for entire areas. It's that we need policies subject to multifamily housing in those particular areas that say, "Here's how we're going to deal with multifamily housing in this area. This is what you can do, and this is what you can't do." And it's critically important, because how long, how much money, how much time did we spend on opportunity siding, which was essentially the same sort of thing? We've done a great deal of work in a great part of our city to say, "This is where we know already that we'd like to see some more multifamily housing. This is where we know we'd like to see that as a possibility." That work naturally leads to this, and it's predominantly done. So the refinement plan piece, it's unfortunate to see it, in my opinion, mischaracterized. We just need to be specific about where multifamily housing can go, and this is a legal way to do that, prior to adding any new areas. Number two, the petitions are filed. It takes 7,800 signatures before the issue of MPT is on the ballot in the community. Would that be correct with the petitions that were filed? It takes about 7,800 signatures?
So two petitions, as I mentioned in my email, were submitted. They're undergoing review now. No ballot title yet. Threshold for signatures, though, is... Is roughly that amount.
So my question to my colleagues is, don't you think they can be gotten? Because if you believe they can be, then the question... Then the point I was trying to make earlier is, without a workforce housing element in this, the general public is going to vote on whether or not we have MPT at all. So however you think that's going to go, let that guide your thinking. If we can work into this, a workforce housing component in the downtown small area, and as we go forward, so I'm in favor of the refinement plan piece and the workforce housing piece as we move forward. If we can do that, what we'll get out of it is a better sense in a larger part of the community that there's a large community benefit in this for everyone, not just for some folks. The other piece that's important is that we'll have a one-year automatic review. So if these numbers are wrong, or if they're not quite right, we'll come back and fix them. But rather than say, "Well, let's just not do it now. Let's do it later after we've thought about it some more," was kind of the conversation we had at the very beginning of this whole, "Let's review MPT" thing. Leave it in place and fix it, and then come back and change it, was our first conversation. I think that we need to put the workforce housing piece in, and as we, like it says here, activating areas outside, we need to have it as a part of the assumption moving forward, as well as certainly the refinement characteristics.
Chris?
I support Option A. And in terms of the possible add-on C or D, I think workforce housing is a legitimate issue in the community. I think it's a very strong issue in the community and needs a lot of conversation. I think MPT being the... And everybody will be surprised to hear me say this, the relatively small tool in the overall tool belt is really not the only way we should be talking about workforce housing. So what Allen is talking about in Option D really is where the conversation needs to go. We should be talking about workforce housing as a large context conversation. HUD may have a role in it. There may be a variety of different ways that workforce housing can be stimulated without necessarily assuming that MPT is going to be the tool that creates it. And so I like the idea of having the conversation around D. I don't know if that date is right. It seems like it's far enough out that hopefully it would be okay. We could extend it if we needed to. So I like the idea of having that extended conversation about workforce housing. I think it's a critical thing, but I don't want to put all my eggs in a MPT basket and think somehow that's going to solve the workforce housing problem, because it's not. So I support Option A, and I could be willing to look at incorporating some kind of a D in order to get that workforce housing conversation going in an appropriate context.
Bullock?
Option D with A.
George Brown?
Well, Option B, most closely, Mayor, is my... And that's, you know, the language of one of my motions that the city attorney cleaned up for me, and that's the one I'm going to support. And Option C is fine, but it needs to be split, because one of my other motions, it directly addresses the workforce housing slash in lieu of payment to provide the public benefit, in manner with the benefit that we're providing the developer, 10-year property tax exemption. So, yeah, I think they should be split, and I have two motions that address that directly, cut right to the heart of it. Well, Option C should be split.
How?
Well, you read my motions, I'm assuming. One is requiring refinement plans before MPT expands into an area. And the other one is revising the MPT ordinance, so that... And that discusses the workforce housing slash in lieu of, outside of the downtown area only. So we'll... Anyway, I favor Option B and half of Option C.
Teddy?
None of them. If you're talking about places where we want multifamily housing, you haven't talked to the people on Willamette Street yet. There's been huge amount of objection before we even get there. People worried about the changes to their neighborhood. And maybe we are going the wrong way, but I think someone said we couldn't require... We couldn't force them to do workforce housing. If we give a tax break, we could do what we want. We can say, "If you want a tax break, you do this." But I think that everyone should pay taxes. I've said that before. But if they get something, it's not as if we're going out and saying, "Hey, you have to build some workforce housing." We're saying, "If you want us to relieve you from paying taxes, then this is what you'll have to do." But I think it's way too soon to talk about outside of downtown. I did think there was some point to incentives for development downtown initially. Now I think downtown is, doesn't need incentives. I was down here yesterday trying to find a parking place. And I, along with many other people, was going around in circles until I realized it was ridiculous in the butterfly lot. And then I looked on the street, and there wasn't anything. And finally, I found something on the third floor, third level of the overpark. But downtown is a place where people want to be, and the kinds of people who like Whole Foods will want to be down here even more when that's built. So there will be a market. If there's a market, then some developer, maybe not the ones we're trying to help now, but some developer will probably step in to fill it without an incentive. Thank you.
Rick?
I'm in favor of Option A coupled with Option D. I think we need to have a clear workforce housing plan, and I think that that will give us an opportunity to develop one, one that makes sense. us an opportunity to develop one, one that makes sense. You know, I was wrestling with coupling option B and D together, but I think that it makes more sense for us to focus on area planning than getting into the minutia of the refinement plan. Besides, option B only talks about, you know, acknowledging refinement plan policies that specifically provide for multiple family and mixed-use projects in the area. I think that the more global approach, and I kind of have wrestled with this over the last couple of days, would be to use the area plan as a base and then look at having a comprehensive workforce housing plan in place to deal with it.
All right, Glenn.
Well, I wrote down five initials for option A and D. And so it sounds like there's a majority of the council that favor those together, although some people, when they were talking about option D, said, maybe I'd support it. It depends on some of the details, but that's what I heard.
Alan?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a way to combine D into C and B and create one that encompasses all of that. And basically, if you took option C and said that we will also, before you activate any area, that we will develop a workforce housing plan with Mupti criteria and other non-Mupti incentives and had the deadline, and then also said, and the area needs to have an area plan. My specific problem with the refinement plan is, I, maybe you do know, George, of all the areas that we have listed, which of them do not have a refinement plan?
I don't know.
I, I would think that a lot of them don't.
It's possible.
And to get there would be, I, I think we want to talk about an approved area plan as opposed to a refinement plan. Refinement plan is actually a term of art that has a very specific purpose. And there aren't very many of them. There's 10 or 15 of them around the city. So what we are moving, and they're very expensive to build, which is why we haven't done one in 10 years. What we're doing now is doing area plans, which are not exactly refinement plans. And so those area plans can be accepted and acknowledged and by the council, and they're not the same thing as a refinement plan, but we can work on getting them all done in the areas that we want to expand before we would expand Mupti into them. So I'm wondering if you could take C and add the deadline, the workforce housing plan, and an area plan requirement and have a kind of a, a motion on steroids.
I think what we're going to do right now is have Glenn, if anyone wanted to put the, do you still want to do that, Glenn?
I'm not sure.
I was wondering.
I think, I'm trying to think through how this all actually looks on paper. So my suggestion, Mayor, is if there's other conversation that you want to have on Mupti, maybe you have that conversation while I work with Amanda and Cindy to see if there's something that we put up there. You know, part of, Alan, in response to what you were just saying, the, the version that went to public hearing had a workforce housing component. It had some specifics. I mean, it had the 30% and some things like that. But that, to me, basically, I think, is the essence of what's in C, except it has the specifics in there. There's another part of the ordinance that would say, you can't use it unless you're downtown, and if you're downtown, the actual workforce housing requirement wouldn't apply. So it, it's really, you know, what is it that you're trying to accomplish that would be different than what we have already in the ordinance? I mean, if, if what the council wanted to do is, if a majority of the council, and maybe I should just throw out what I think maybe a majority of the council might want to do, is that you have Mupti downtown, and there's some nuances as to how you perhaps define downtown, but you have Mupti downtown. There's a review panel of six professionals, that what you allow downtown is Mupti without workforce housing requirement, but there must be a fee that's going to be paid in lieu of that. And there's, I don't hear a majority yet as to what that fee would constitute, whether developer could choose to build something either as part of the particular Mupti building or an adjacent building, so like on the E website. But I do hear support for allowing Mupti to continue downtown without a workforce housing, without having to build workforce housing as part of the project. And that to activate areas outside, it's the existing language, except adding another requirement that before anything can be activated outside of downtown, there must be the workforce housing plan that Alan had in his motion.
Come back in a year.
That would have to be back to the council within a year, which basically means there would be no Mupti outside of downtown, no Mupti applications could be received outside of downtown within at least the first year, until you actually adopted that workforce housing plan. So the essence of this is, you could have a Mupti downtown, wouldn't have to have workforce housing, you'd have to pay a fee, the amount of the fee would still be determined.
My remaining time. So to clarify, I talked to George yesterday and I agree with what he's trying to do within C. And C is in, is included in a workforce plan, and I think it's a good idea at this point to probably add it to it so it's specified. But the workforce housing plan goes beyond just Mupti, and that's what I was trying to capture here. So that what we're trying to do is create a city workforce housing plan, because if we're just relying on Mupti, we're not even going to come close. And so I think C, C is embedded in D, but we can make it be specific if we want to combine the two and, and build more support for the motion. So I would just think that C is part of D and we can be specific about it and then, but it also includes this broader plan or up for the whole city, including other things beyond Mupti as incentives or policies that we could do or working with HUD or whoever.
Right. I mean, there's no problem adding more specificity to what the workforce housing plan would have to include, and that certainly could include everything that is in C.
Yeah, and that was my intent with proposing a new motion, or a hybrid.
You're working on this language now?
If somebody has a question for me, yes, I'm going to work on that language.
I've got Mike and George.
Out of respect for the chair, I went along with the process of not making motions because, and having a discussion, because that seemed what we were doing, but it seems to me now like we're building motions. And so...
And the proposal was that he would try to put together what he heard from you in front of you and you can make motions based on...
Well, I'm not going to make motions based on that. I already have done the work based on the things that were given to us previously and based on all the previous conversation and emails. Those motions have already been constructed. And this isn't the helpful process to that, at least for me, because what we've done has complicated from my perspective. So I, I would like to say that there's a very simple motion here and it's option number two, from what the manager put forward with George's language and the attorney's language around the other three, and everything that we've just discussed gets to majority votes, I would be willing to bet. So I would request that we, we finish this soon. Yes, by the way, anecdotally, on the side, I would say, we need a workforce housing plan. No one ever suggested that Mupti alone was the be-all and end-all for that. It was just a more elegant way for us to deal with a public benefit for Mupti. So I, no one ever suggested that this was the only plan and certainly we could do it more as we move forward. But I'm, I suppose, I'll just wait, as I know I'm second in the queue after George, and we'll make the motions when it's time.
George, you have a question, something you want to say before we look to either whatever Glenn comes up with or to put motions out?
Well, I, I think we ought to start with the motions. Rather than, you know, on the fly craft motions now, I mean, you know, we've had...
So I just want to be clear here that, that what we've tried to do is take your motions and put them into language and get ready to put, to make an ordinance, not to...
I understand that.
So that, so if you want, if you feel the need to say your motions and you think they're somewhat, somewhat different than what he's going to put in there, go ahead and put it out there and then we'll make sure what you want to propose is considered.
Well, so are we, are you saying that we should just sit around and wait for the attorney to craft, cobble something together for...
It's going to be very quickly, but it's...
Well, and they usually can, and I admire that ability very much.
Give him a shot.
George, what I'm saying is, I'm fine with either way. If you want to put a motion out there, I'm fine with that.
Well, I, we have 28 minutes left. And if we don't want to finish it today, that's fine. We can finish it up next week.
My only question is, my only consideration was trying to get that language out in front of you in time for you to discuss it.
And so if I can clarify in case people don't know at least what I'm talking about, what I think I can do fairly quickly is have up on the screen, the base ordinance, the one that was attached, no, the base ordinance that was attached to the AIS, and then show changes to it that reflect what I heard, I think in each case it was at least five of you say. And so then you would have an ordinance that you could then say, okay, I don't like this, so I move to amend that section to do X. The alternative to doing that is basically direction to us to bring back an ordinance that contains certain things. Because what you can't do at the moment is start making motions to amend an ordinance because you don't have an ordinance on the table. Now, what Mike's saying is absolutely correct. You could, somebody could move to adopt ordinance version two, which I sent out, I think it was last night.
Thursday.
I mean, the AIS went out earlier. It described the option, but the actual ordinance I attached, it was last night. So you could do that and then make amendments to that. But most of the things that we've been talking about, I won't be able to give you language on the fly to amend into version two. I spent this morning trying to figure out how to do some of this stuff to version one. So the choice is, do you want me to put something up on the screen that you can then make specific amendments to, or do you want to give us direction and then we'll bring you something back on Monday?
So let's, let's give you two options here. One, he brings back the ordinance, or he doesn't and you put the motion out there. Would you prefer to do, Claire?
I'll defer to my colleagues.
Okay. Alan?
I'd like to see something on the screen and then give them direction to bring back the final product.
I'm quite certain we can get through this really quickly with the materials we already have and we've already seen.
Chris, got any opinions?
I'd like to see it up on the screen with the amendments we've been talking about and then bring back a final thing to vote on.
Okay. George?
Well, I agree with Mike. I think we could, we could have gotten through this a lot quicker. I'd like to see us just move forward.
George?
I, I want to make my motions. Here's the problem. We, we're, since last Thursday, we've been working with the ordinance language that was in our packet. And hopefully we've all looked over that. Now, all of a sudden, less than 24 hours before this meeting, we get four alternate ordinances sent to us in the email. They're not in front of us, they're in hard copies. Did anyone read all four of them last night? I didn't. I was up till midnight working on, on other things directly related to this. So to get bombarded with, it just confuses things. Let's work with the ordinances that's in the AIS, and I've got my motions ready to go, and it covers specifically all the stuff we've been talking about for the last thirty minute, you know, hour. So I'd just as soon go ahead and start making motions.
I'd like to go to the queue and let people make motions if they want to.
Greg?
I'd like to put it up on the screen. Let's work through it.
Screen, screen, screen.
You've got four and four, Mayor.
Four and four.
Mayor, my suggestion is that you just, we don't put it up on the screen and that you, if you want to make motions. Now, I disagree, George, that your motions are ready to amend specific ordinance language because they're not. There's, I mean, to amend specific ordinance language, you have to be able to say, I move to amend section 2. whatever subsection 3 to add the following language. Yours aren't set up that way. But you can certainly...
Direct.
Give us direction on how, on what outcomes you want, and then we will bring you something back on Monday.
All right. So, so...
That's typical.
Let's start out with, George Brown, you want to put a motion out?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. And I'll discuss it if I get a second. Let me find the right, and let's see.
Was it option two?
I moved, well, it's like, I want to use my revision. Ah ha, here we go. All right. I move to direct the city manager to revise the Mupti ordinance so that before any area other than within the downtown plan east of Charnelton Street becomes eligible for Mupti projects, the city council must have adopted amendments or amendments to the Mupti program requiring that a percentage of the units in an approved Mupti project must be workforce housing, or the developer must make commensurate in lieu of payments to the city that are based on workforce housing rental rates and that any such payments be dedicated to a workforce housing fund.
Second. Motion seconded.
Thank you. Last January, a really pretty much landslide majority of the council approved some motions that I made, some amendments that I made regarding workforce housing and in lieu fees. It was, the vote was seven to one. So I think there's clearly a desire from the council to tie workforce housing with the Mupti program. Will it be the be-all and solve the whole problem? No, of course not. Saint Vincent and AXA and all the others, they're, they're chipping away at the problem. This is another chipper that we're proposing here. And where it would cover the segment of the population making by my, my, what I call workforce housing, you're making 60 to 100% of the area median income. All of the other agencies cover people that are 60% or less. The workforce housing, which is probably the majority of the people that live in this town, have no such aid whatsoever to help them with their housing costs. And most of them are rent burdened. They're paying more than 30% of their income on housing. So council wisely chose to support that and make it a part of the Mupti program. I removed specificity from this. Is 30% the right number for the units to be provided? I don't know. We'll study that. Is, what should the in lieu payment fee be? I don't know exactly what it's going to be to make it work in Eugene. And so this, this, that's what this motion does. And, and I'm not exactly sure how to attach it into the ordinance, thinking, you know, it's section 2.9463H maybe.
That's H just eight and nine.
So, that's, that's why. It's, it's basically part of options C. You know, it's the second half of option C, and I think it's better to split them up for discussion purposes and refinement. Yes, thank you.
To George's motion, I've got in the queue, Mike Clark, Alan Zelenka, Betty Taylor. Did you want to be in this one?
No.
And Claire Surratt. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for Glenn's last email of yesterday, and now I'm just having a hard time finding that one. Darn it. So what I want to look towards here and say, for clarity's sake, this is your amendment number one to Glenn's option two from last night. Do I have that right?
I'm not sure.
See, that's the problem that I'm having here with your initial motion. Glenn, you sent the, the work last night. Now I'm having trouble finding that email.
Yes, and I thought I had a...
Because option two, can we have timeout here on the timer while we find this material?
It's option two ordinance. So, what is it you're asking?
Okay, I have it. Your Glenn's comments, right? Were you right?
Glenn's motion number two was what we were working from.
Is this one?
Council may expand the boundaries covered by... Council may expand the boundaries covered by sections.
Are you just asking what the, there is an ordinance number two, Mike, which was workforce housing with the downtown exemption. So is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, because it had the downtown exemption, and then George was saying east of Charnelton, and it had the piece for, it discussed workforce housing the appropriate way, and I've heard George's changes to the opening of the percentages in a way that I'm, I can support what you just brought forward. Timer, please. Yeah, and I would say that based on all of our discussions, that beginning with the original ordinance, with the discussion that we had with the piece around workforce housing, except in those areas, requires two more amendments in order for it to, to be complete and encapsulate where I think most people were talking about in our discussion. And it's the moving forward with refinement plan language, and the piece around the, the public benefit in the exemption zone. So I'm wondering if other councillors might make those amendments. I'll start with the first, saying that I think there needs to be further public benefit in the, in those areas east of Charnelton. And that number should be 10% of the property tax exemption in that area. And if I, first, I'll try that as a friendly.
I, I won't accept that, and here's why. I have three motions.
I'll make it then as a
Covers that piece.
Then accept it.
That covers two others.
I'll, I'll make that then as an amendment, and if I get a second, I'll speak to that for a second. Thank you.
So before you speak to it, Mike, would you clarify what language you are adding?
I think it was the language that you finally approved, or I mean, that George finally agreed to in the language that you suggested around his amendment number three in that last email, where you talk about the in lieu of, not the in lieu of payment, which is separate.
You look at the sheet I just handed out?
I haven't read it yet.
Oh, but that's, Beth took what I had sent out, I think is what I sent out, and just put it on this sheet for you. So what George made, I believe George's motion number one, and I think what you're talking about, Mike, is motion number three.
It is this language, except for it is 10%, and it is east of Charnelton in the downtown plan.
So what you're proposing is to amend George's motion number one by adding at the end of it, the language of number three, except change 20% to 10%.
I am. And if I get a
And that's what George
George seconded. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, further discussion?
And if I could, with my remaining time here, I'll just say this. My concern with this is that we don't have enough time, and we're going to start to feel rushed here soon, and I hope we don't. Because I think if we are willing to consider George's initial base motion with the refinement plan changes and the in lieu of payment piece, and consider that simple question, and have that come back to us for final approval, I think we may find that it has a majority of support. I'm not sure. But I think we will find the greatest amount of community support from that particular diversion, that particular version. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I certainly appreciate what you're, what you're doing here, councillor Clark, but I, I, I prefer to see them separated, not all bundled, because each one's going to take, take a while. And I agree with you. If we do this right today, we will get community support for what we've done. People will see that we will have created something that's going to make a dent in the terrible housing problem in our little neck of the woods. It is a nationwide problem, and it is a crisis. It's not on the front page all the time, but people concerned with housing know that it's a crisis. And so I would prefer to have them, not have them all bundled up, but take them one at a time. And specifically for motion number one here, I remove the specific language so that we could craft through time. And it only applies for MUPD. Now, you can have a bigger conversation about workforce housing, but it should not be bundled in with the MUPD thing. That's going to delay the implementation of, you know, the, the final ordinance, because I can just see it now, oh, gosh, well, let's get all these people together, and we'll take a whole bunch of months, and we'll have, you know, we'll have all these meetings, and it's like, we don't have to do that. We just need to specify, through studying other cities' policies, what we want the percentage of workforce housing unit requirement to be, or the in lieu payment. How should that be structured? And we have lots of examples to look at, and I think we just should focus on that. And that's the intent of the first motion. The refinement plan requirement, we heard the city attorney say earlier that that's what he envisioned when they used the words area plan. It was, it was, area plans are vaguer and don't have the legal standing that a refinement plan has. And I think it's not going to take any longer to make, craft refinement plans for the areas that need one than it would in area plan. So, and then the third one, kind of, it cuts to the chase. We've all agreed that there should be no workforce housing requirement downtown. Well, I don't know if we've all agreed to that, but I think a majority has. And I think the only, I'm proposing 20%. Now, we can talk about that. But once we, if we do these three things, I think we're going to end up with a pretty good product. And I think people will see that, gosh, there's going to be public benefit produced here. It's not just a giveaway to the developers. I think people will be happy with this. They may wish the percentages were higher or lower or something, but I think we'll have a product that has widespread community support.
We have about 10 minutes left to go. Let's try to talk as little as we can to still get our points across. Alan?
So, George, I was wondering if you would accept a friendly that would add to your motion that we would create a citywide workforce housing plan, taking into consideration non-MUPD incentives and policies by July 30th, 2016?
Well, I think we're discussing
At this point, he can't do that because Mike's amendment is on the table.
I know, I'm just asking him a question.
Probably not. I think it's
Don't want to do
I think it's making
A statewide workforce housing plan?
Well, I think we need to do the MUPD workforce thing first, and then, yes, eventually, of course, sure, but they shouldn't be tied together with the MUPD.
Consideration of the amendment plus this. This revises which MUPD ordinance? The one that is in the AIS? George?
Good question. That's, that's what I, that's what I'm assuming. Are we all assuming it's not one through four? It's the one that we've been working with since last Thursday. That's, that's my assumption.
If it's the one that's in our AIS, then there is no fee for downtown. If you just remove the workforce housing from that, there's no replacement fee. I see that you have a motion three, but that doesn't specify that only occurs in the downtown area.
I think it did, ma'am.
So if you just remove the workforce housing requirement from downtown with the existing ordinance, there's nothing. There's no fee, and there's no workforce housing.
Okay, we're not going to have a debate here.
So unless you fix that
Mike's motion's on the table.
And fix that in that amendment.
That's what my amendment does, is fix that problem he just mentioned.
So maybe you could say how yours changes that more specifically again.
It gets us to the place where we have workforce housing requirement as the baseline, with everything west of Charnelton in the downtown plan, and everything east of Charnelton in the downtown area has a 10% surcharge on the tax benefit. That's what my amendment takes us to.
The original fee idea that we had.
Did you have me in the queue?
Correct.
I'm not on this, well, I thought I was. No, because we're on, no, because you were on his, and this is his. Putting my hand
Would you accept as a friendly the adding of, to this motion, a citywide workforce housing plan?
I'm in favor of the idea, but I don't want to muddy this up some more, so I don't want to do that now. I'd rather do it later, but I'd absolutely vote for it later.
Okay.
Separate motion, yeah.
Greg?
I have a point of information question for the city attorney. What's becoming more clear to me is that I think we have, we have two discussions running. One is for MUPD for downtown, one is MUPD outside of downtown. Could we bifurcate this and have a separate MUPD ordinance for downtown, and then for the rest of the area, a different ordinance?
Legally, yes. We could do that.
We could do that. Okay. And I know that I'm not speaking to the motion, so I'll step out of the queue at this point, but I think what would make the best sense for us to do is to bifurcate this, have a separate MUPD ordinance for the downtown area, and have a MUPD ordinance for the rest of the city that makes sense and focuses in on workforce housing.
I think that with enough work, that the city attorney can create the MUPD ordinance in one place that gets at those two different distinctions, I think. But I understand your motivation for thinking about that, but then we'd have to another public hearing, we'd have to go through that whole process for a second ordinance. I don't actually understand, quite understand councillor Brown's objection to councillor Clark's amendment. I think, I think it gets us where we want to go, or at least where I think councillor Brown wants to go. I can support councillor Brown's motion and the amendment, because what I'm hearing conceptually is the ideas that we're going to require 10% in lieu of payment for MUPD projects downtown. They won't be exempted from providing a fee, although we do not have a workforce housing fund. So that is one technical question I have about the language, because councillor Clark's motion references a workforce housing fund, and we don't currently have one. We have an affordable housing fund. So if they can be considered the same thing, then I think that's fine. But if that's a distinctive new fund, we need to actually create that. But it gets us that downtown, and then it sets up a process for us to decide what kind of requirement we want for other MUPD projects that are going to be developed outside of downtown, and not trying to land on a specific percentage here. So I actually support the motion as amended at this point.
Ready to vote on the amendment that had been proposed by councillor Clark? Yes.
I, I, this is an answer to comments from councillors Zelenka and councillor Clark. My, my motion specifically refers to downtown, and it proposes an in lieu of fee. And, I mean, I, now's not the time to propose it, but it's, it's a little bit different from what's printed here in the material that we got this morning.
All right, so we're going to vote on the proposed amendment?
Please read it again.
Yes, read it.
Are you reading this one?
I'm reading that one and mine, and my motion, and they're, they're a little bit different. It's, it's, my motion specifically refers to the downtown area.
Glenn gave us a motion last night. He gave us several motion options via email. This proceeds from option number two, which begins with the base level ordinance, and assumes your version of amendments, and then with the cleaned up language, your, you've done the first part, and I've done what was the third part of your amendments.
Are we ready to vote?
Well, I want to know what we're voting on.
Who to? The wording?
I want to hear it again.
Feature your proposal, councillor.
I think that what this does, it starts with the base level ordinance, then it takes the piece that Glenn gave us last night as option two, which essentially references to creating workforce partnership, excuse me, workforce partnership, workforce housing as the, the public benefit component, like you've put forward in the plan that you've made. Your specific amendment says, okay, let's take out the percentages, let's leave this open, and the in lieu of payment like that. But that stuff only applies west of Charnelton. Right?
Well, and north, and
Right, exactly. But east of Charnelton, there's nothing, because the base level thing didn't have anything in it. So east of Charnelton is the 10% piece that you had originally proposed as 20% in your third option. That was my amendment. So now we've got two of your three pieces with this vote.
Yep.
I still want to hear the amendment. I want someone to read it again.
Restate your motion, Mike.
I can't, my, my
I can.
Glenn is going to do it.
Because I think what you said, Mike, when I asked you to clarify, is that you were picking up George's motion number three with a couple tweaks, and so
Which three, which one?
On the, on the thing I just handed out, Mike. And so the motion, as I understand it, would be to amend George's motion
Initial motion.
By adding the words, in lieu of the workforce housing requirement, adding east of Broadway, oh, I'm sorry, Charnelton. The owners shall pay to the city 10% of the total property tax exemption, and that any such payments will be dedicated to a workforce housing fund.
Which also assumes the PUD piece that we talked about, because it's in the previous ordinance.
Okay, we're going to, yes.
I'm still unclear what we're voting on.
You are voting on whether to add to the motion that you made, George, this language here.
But with 10% instead of 20?
Instead of 20.
Right. And making it clear that it's east of Charnelton.
Only, only applies to east of Charnelton.
Okay, once again, I'll go back to my motion number three. That's exactly what it says in my motion number three.
Make motion three.
But the point, the point is, you don't, in their
Right. I'm waiting for my turn to make that motion.
George, in their view, you don't have to have your three motions. If you put this motion with your motion, you've got the two motions
Right. This is two thirds of where you want to get to right now with the, if you agree to do what I've amended, we've got, by the way, I'm going to move to extend for 15 minutes.
Second.
Ten seconded. All those in favor, please indicate.
Thank you. With doing this, what we'll have is, instead of separating, bifurcating out and talking about each of the three pieces important to you individually, we'll get one and three done the way that you had written about them and discussed them, except instead of 20%, it's 10%. Because the in lieu of piece is different than the fee piece. Those are separate. Right?
I understand that.
Okay. So what I'm just saying is, hey, I'll throw in the third piece in on it as an amendment here. We don't have to discuss it, yeah, so that we don't have to discuss it separately. And then we can get to the refinement plan pieces, our last part of the amendments.
Okay, we're going to vote on it.
Clarification again. So what you did, Mike, was change it from 20% to 10%.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I move to amend this?
No.
One amendment at a time.
Only one amendment at a time.
All right, after we, we'll pass this. After we pass this, I want to make an amendment to it.
Moving back to the original motion as amended, and another proposal can come forward. All right. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two, it passes. All right. And then we're back to the main motion as amended. Did you have something else you wanted to?
Well, I want, I want to, I want to hear what, where we're at here. Okay? Because we've been getting news, we're getting papers, we got all kinds of emails. So it's my main motion with that
As Glenn wrote it.
It's So is it?
Well, George, I think this is exactly what you
That captures it. Yeah, that's good. Okay, with Mike's amendment. Well, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay, go.
I move to amend the fee from 10% to 15%. I'll speak to it if I get a second. Thank you. 10% is really, it's just way too low. It's going to be very easy, I mean, I'm, hopefully, everybody read the primer on proformas that I had provided you earlier in our MUPD conversations, that shows how malleable and how a developer will typically draw up many, many, many proformas, some for internal use, some for use with their equity partners and bankers, and definitely some for a public body that offers 10-year tax, property tax exemptions. And they have different ones for different audiences. Okay? So it's going to be very easy for a developer, or an applicant, to massage those figures. And I'm not saying it's unethical or illegal, because they do it all the time. They want to know what different scenarios are. They do it internally, will at least have three proformas for their own internal consumption before they go to anyone else with a proposal. And I want to tell you that 10% is very easy to just play around with some figures with rents or the cost of building materials, and that 10% will, will come from forgone revenue from the city. It won't come out of pocket from them. In other words, the tax exemption will cover it. They're not out of pocket with cash. So I just think it's too low. 20% may be too high. Maybe my original presentation was too high. I will, would like to remind everybody that a year ago, a year and a half ago, HubCor Campus voluntarily kicked back 23% of their voluntarily kicked back 23% of their tax exemption. They got a tax exemption for $8.8 million, and they kicked back $900,000 to the city. That's 23%. How did they do that? Well, they raised the rents of their beds significantly, and that's where it's coming from. So, you know, 10% is really almost meaningless. I would like to make that 15%.
Yeah, I, I agree that the 15% is probably reasonable. Hub building on Franklin did over 20%. Where I disagree with my colleague, and maybe you'll take this as a friendly, is that the ability to pay that fee because of the economies of scale to building projects is not the same for very large projects as it is for smaller projects. That's why I came up with the delineation between what I thought was a small project and a large project at $15 million of capital cost. So, those below that $15 million have less ability to pay that 15% than do the very large projects like the hub, which is a $45 million project. And so, for larger projects, I think they can afford to pay more, 15%. For the smaller ones, I think it's more difficult. So, that's why I made that delineation and was requesting, and I was wondering if you'd take that as a friendly amendment.
Well, no, I think it should be straight across the board.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on this amendment. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, in opposition, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, it goes down. You're back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Glenn, I was wondering if you could give me some better language than any that we've had so far that tries to capture what I'm going to try and explain to you as best I can. Because I heard a tension point, a difference in this conversation, that I want to, I want to find a way to send you off to build language into an ordinance with the, with the right idea here. What we want to be able to have is this is not a complete refinement plan for any area that comes in. I don't want to amend to add a complete, top to bottom, soup to nuts refinement plan for any neighborhood or area that comes in. What we want to do is have refinement plan policies such that they deal with multifamily How would I best make that motion as an amendment to this?
So, the-
That carry the weight of a refinement plan policy?
So, I think what you can say, which would deal with the issues that Alan's bringing up related to what people traditionally think of as a refinement plan, which is usually an entire neighborhood, if you said legally binding area plan policies that are approved by the city and acknowledged by DLCD, I think that gets at maybe what George is talking about wanting to-
Why can't I use the word refinement plan?
You, you could, and that's why, and that's why I was saying that people traditionally think of refinement plans as neighborhood refinement plans.
Then I will, if I could, please, I will take as my motion the statement you just made, except for using the words "area plan," I will use the words "refinement plan." So, would you restate?
Well, if you say, if you say refinement plan, basically what you have, I think, is George's motion.
Good.
Right, you have George's motion. It doesn't say it has to be-
That's what I wanted to be clear of. George's motion, thank you. That's what I wanted to be clear of. George's motion around, around this particular issue is not creating entirely new refinement plans, and the attorney just told us so. It's just dealing with this particular, very limited scope issue of how we do multifamily housing in specifics in any new area. And from my perspective, we've done most of the work around infill and opportunity citing already, so we know a lot of these facts on the ground in the first place. So, my amendment is to add that piece to the existing motion so that, that issue about bringing on new, new areas has that as a piece of work that needs to be done before we do. Will you take that as a friendly, since it's your language?
First of all, I haven't made a motion yet.
No, we're still talking about the main motion.
Oh, the main, we're still on the main?
That's amended.
So, would you take your, your language around refinement plans as a friendly for your main motion?
The language that the attorney provided-
The one, when he said he thought, you said you thought his was fine.
Yes, I do.
You take that as a friendly?
You want to add this to the main motion?
Yep.
I would accept that, yeah.
Excellent. Then I think we have a motion that's ready, in my opinion.
Okay, so to be clear for everybody, what just got added was, on the sheet I just handed out a couple minutes ago, motion number 2 is now part of the main motion. George, who accepted, who was the second on yours? Main motion?
Betty.
Betty, I believe, yeah.
Okay. So, now that's, so now you have a main motion-
As amended.
As amended. That also includes George's motion number 2.
And?
And his 3. I think I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, and you?
Just to clarify, when people were using loose language, they were saying a refinement plan, or a refinement plan is different than refinement plan policies that specify, specifically provide for multifamily mixed-use projects. That I'm okay with. The fact that we don't have refinement plans, and that we don't have any plans to have refinement plans in any of these areas means that they may never get into Mupti because we won't ever do refinement plans because it costs $500,000 a piece. So, with that clarification that we're talking about policies, refinement plan policies with small r, small p, that specify, provide for multifamily and mixed-use projects in that area, I'm fine with that, and I can-
So, Glenn, I just want, I don't want us to have to debate this, so I just want you to clarify what we, what we've agreed to here.
So, the, the main motion, George's initial main motion was amended by Mike's adding George's motion number 3, but making it 10%. And now, it includes George's motion number 2, which, as Alan just said, would say no Muptis in any of these new areas outside of downtown until there have been policies adopted that have the weight of law, refinement plan status in a sense, that cover multifamily and mixed-use projects.
Point of order. This, since we started from the original ordinance and language and original beginning, contains the six-person committee?
And we stopped, we stopped-
We still have to amend that?
That was a straw vote.
Correct.
So, so if he accepted that as a friendly, I will amend to add that, and the SDC part was also a part of the original?
The SDC is in the, is already in the ordinance.
Then I, I move to amend to add the 6, unless you'll accept it as a friendly?
Ah, 6 is fine with me.
Then it's a friendly?
Okay.
Then now we have an ordinance.
Betty, you're okay with that as the secondary?
Yes. And Chris, did you have any questions?
Yeah, so, just to clarify, we're basically adopting everything that's on here with some minor tweaking.
Correct. Plus the changing the-
Plus the changing the composition of the board.
Correct.
So, in motion number 2, where it says, "By adopting or amending and having the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development acknowledge," so whatever refinement plan we did would not only have to be something that we did, but it would also have to be adopted at the state level or acknowledged?
Not adopted, it would have to be acknowledged, which it does anyway.
That they received it.
Yeah, right. Any change to a refinement plan, the metro plan, the land use code, all of that stuff gets acknowledged. There's an acknowledgement process. The state doesn't have to specifically take action unless somebody's objecting to it, in which case the state acts on the objection. So, adding that language doesn't change any way that we'd be doing business anyway. Okay?
Okay. Clear.
And then, I just have a question. Counselor Clark is trying to wrap this all up in one amended big mega motion. Do you need a motion from us on the boundary discussion that we had? Or we have not amended the boundary, and therefore, we don't need to, I mean-
Correct, you have not-
In principle, we agreed that we didn't, as a majority, didn't want it.
Well, the ordinance that was attached to the AIS that went to the public hearing has the existing boundary. This doesn't change any of that. All this does is change where the workforce housing kicks in, doesn't kick in, where the fee kicks in, doesn't kick in, with Charnleton being that dividing.
Okay, so that keeps the 1 property on 11th and Lincoln and the E-Web north of 4th as part of, okay. Great.
And so, the next question is, is everything in this now that we need to deal with?
Mm-hmm.
That would be a question for all of you. Everything is in this that, if you pass this, I think I know what it is I need to bring back to you.
That's the question.
Right, and what it would be is the, it would be the ordinance that was attached to your AIS with all of the changes that are in this motion.
Okay.
I have an amendment to make after we're done with this conversation about the fee, but I had a question about the SDCs. So, that's the language on page 12 of the existing attachment. Does that only apply to the SDCs? This language only apply to the SDCs associated with the Mupti project?
No.
It goes well beyond that, including-
This is for any multifamily project, which would be five or more. The language in here applies to that because that's what you said you wanted in there before the public hearing.
So, implications of this are profound, actually. If you were to look backwards five years, 50% of the SDCs associated with the multifamily housing built in the city, almost all of which was in Ward 3, my ward, would have been required to be spent in that area. Yeah, that's what this says. The 50% has to be spent in that neighborhood, right?
So, my suggestion, so, no, I don't think it works that way, Alan. My suggestion is you and I have a conversation later, and if need be, we can have that conversation when the ordinance comes back to you, because unless you're going to give direction to change that at the moment, you don't need to have that conversation right now. You can vote on, well, and anyway, you have a motion on the table, which is George's original amended, friendly amended motion that you should vote on before you talk about other parts of this.
But, but the language in this existing motion says, "The improvement is located within the boundaries of the neighborhood assertion where the development is being constructed." That means that the improvements that the SDCs have to go towards, the 50%, have to be in that neighborhood. If counsel approves on a project-by-project basis. It doesn't say that. It says that the improvement is located within the boundaries, and it's-
Well, then we'll fix that.
I mean, if, if y'all want all that money to be spent in one part of town, which is where it's going, what's going to occur, then I'm okay with that.
What I'm going to suggest is that you talk about that here, what Glenn has to say, and, and then when this comes back, you're going to still have to vote on the ordinance when it comes back.
We'll fix that. I think that needs to be fixed. If the intent was that it be spent, I don't know what the intent was.
I thought I explained the intent fairly well on that.
We're going to vote on the main motion as amended. All those in favor, please indicate.
I'm sorry, point of order, do we vote on Mike's amendment to add the 6?
No, that was accepted as a friendly.
As a friendly, so we don't have to vote on it. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, in opposition, 1, it passes. Thank you. I think we-
I want one more amendment I asked for before, before that, which was to regard to the fee, I would like to amend it to say that the, that the fee be equal to 10% tax exemption projects less than capital cost of 15 million and be equal to 15% for projects equal to or greater than 15 million.
Second.
Seconded. Counselor Clark?
First of all, we have less than one minute to debate this, and we've already passed the, the motion, so I don't know how this can be an amendment when we've already passed it. But, the problem with that for me is, is I understood our original discussion, is that requires financials from the developer, which is working here, which was a sticking point previously, and the whole reason for the elegance of the workforce housing piece in the first place. So, I strongly suggest we don't change this that radically right now.
Well, the developers will providing us with proformas. I will tell how much the project is going to cost, because they will be seeking the 10-year property tax exemption, so we'll know how much, how much they're going to spend on the project, and I'm going to support this amendment.
To vote on this motion, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, in opposition?
He's saying which motion?
What was the motion?
He made a motion just now.
15%.
15% for more than 15 million.
The 15, 15.
Okay, back again. All those in favor of his motion, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, in opposition, 1, 2, 3, 4. I'm going to vote against it, so it goes down. Yes.
There is one point, and I think it might be a clerical or a typo, on page 10 of 14 of the ordinance, subsection D, there's two sentences. I think the first sentence belongs in there, but the second sentence reads like it belongs somewhere else, and I couldn't figure out where.
We'll take a look, George, and figure out.
Okay, that ends the business for today. Thank you.
Well, I love the case.